This meeting is called to order. We want to welcome all of you here to the March 10th, 2014 meeting of the Caldwell County Board of Education. And it's good to see such a large crowd here. I think this is one of the larger crowds that we've had in some time. And we know that many of you are here for the honors and recognitions. And we're certainly happy that you are here this evening. And, you know, it's been such a beautiful day today. And Dr. Stone assured me earlier that we were not going to have any more bad weather. And so, we would not be missing any more school days. But anyway, we hope that's the case. It's certainly a beautiful day out there today. I'd also like to mention that, as many of you are probably aware, Dottie became a grandmother back in July. And Libby Brown became a grandmother in August. And I became a grandfather 17 days ago. So Sidney Lee Pennell was born. And that was 17 days ago. She was seven pounds, seven ounces at that time. And her mother is doing well. Jenna and my son Stephen, they're adjusting to a little bit different lifestyle there and maybe losing a little bit of sleep, but they're loving it. And certainly, we're looking forward to an announcement either at the July or the August meeting from Mr. Knight over here. His daughter is expecting in mid-July. So, we look forward to that. At this time, we're going to move on to the invocation I like to call on Dr. Carol Burns.
Since you're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I would ask you to stand, please. My pastor would say you'll participate better if you stand up. May we pray. Our Father, we're truly thankful for the many blessings that you give to us so graciously. We thank you for our country. We thank you for our beautiful state and the communities where we live. We thank you for abundant food and shelter. But most of all, we thank you for the privilege we have of working with the boys and the girls in this school system. It's an awesome task that we have to give our best efforts to every day. We ask your forgiveness where we failed. Things we've done knowingly and things we have not done because we did not know. We know that you have told us in your word that if we would ask, you would give to us. So, we ask for knowledge and wisdom on a daily basis so that we will do our best to help every child succeed. And on this evening, we ask for wisdom for our school board so that every decision they make today will be in the best interest of all of the boys and girls in the Caldwell County school system. We want to do our best for every child. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Please remain standing. We have the Pledge of Allegiance. We have students from Collettsville School. They are Chloe Blair, 7th grade, daughter of Doug. And Wendy Blair. Kaylee Harden, 7th grade, daughter of Danny and Dawn Harden. And Boyd Heinman, 7th grade, son of Keith and Kim Heinman.
Attention, so we pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A.B. City? Want to thank each of the students with us tonight from Collettsville that did the Pledge of Allegiance. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And the board has had the agenda for some time and had a chance to look over it. Do I hear a motion that we approve the...
Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I'd like to propose that we eliminate or delete Item 16, closed session. We really don't need to have that tonight, so I'd like to have the agenda amended to delete Item 16.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda as has been amended?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the agenda be approved as amended, deleting Item 16.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, board, you have had the minutes before you for our regular board meeting back on February the 10th. And also, that was followed by a closed session. And you have the minutes from that as well. So, do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes of the two meetings on February 10th?
Mr. Chairman, I like a motion we approve the minutes of the February 10th, regular meeting and the closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And the motion passes. Next, we do have our honors and our recognitions. I know that there will be reasons why many of you might need to leave after this, but we would encourage you to stay for the duration of the honors and the recognitions. And then, we'll give you an opportunity, if you need to go home to... for dinner, or you have children, to read or do homework of one sort or another. So, I would like to encourage you to stay for the duration of the honors and the recognitions. And again, thank you very much for being here. And we're going to call now upon Mrs. Libby Brown, our Community Relations Director. And the board's going to move down front to shake hands with those honorees.
Chairman Pennell, board members, and Dr. Stone, we do have a lot of congratulating to do tonight. So, we're going to start with our art students. Congratulations to the following students whose artwork has been selected for the Education Center Art Gallery. And we are pleased and honored to recognize each of you students tonight. So, as I call your name, please come forward for a certificate of recognition. Collettsville, we'll start with Collettsville School Principal Craig Styron. We have Christian Brown, 2nd grade, and Brayley Coffey, 2nd grade. So, are those students here with us tonight? Come on. For Happy Valley, Principal Chad Smith and art teacher Melissa Yarazowski, we have with us these students who are in our art gallery. Katie McCoy, 6th grade. Mallory McGee, 5th grade. Ethan Miller, 1st grade. And Madison Watson, 2nd grade. So, these are our five students from Happy Valley School. Now, we are going to take breaks throughout this honor and recognition section so that you can get lots of pictures. So, now it's a picture break.
If you'd like to move out to the middle of the aisle, we'll be here until you finish your pictures. All right, keep smiling. Hold the certificate down.
We have Kings Creek. Jenny McNulty is principal. Art teacher Lonnie Higgs. We have Caitlin Bradshaw, 8th grade. Gabby Pope, 2nd grade. And Sarah Stewart, 5th grade. So, these are our Kings Creek students. We have Sawmills Elementary Lowell Rogers, principal. Brad Wright, art teacher. We have Kayla Avery, 5th grade. Connor Finley, 5th grade. And Alyssa Wright, 5th grade. Stay with us, this is Brad. And we have one more school. Gamel Middle School. And Dr. Michael Wyatt is principal. Art teacher Janet Roman. David Cole, 6th grade. Erin Hannah, 8th grade. And Alex Marlowe, 7th grade. So, that's it for our student. Now, we have a moment for pictures.
Okay, next, we're going to turn our attention to athletics. Congratulations to Caleb Woodin Jr. at West Caldwell High School, who placed third in the North Carolina 2A Wrestling Championship. Caleb's weight class is 190 pounds. And after last month's competition, West Caldwell High School has now earned the right to boast of an individual championship in wrestling. Congratulations to Jacob Houck, who won the North Carolina 2A Wrestling Championship in the 126-pound weight division. And he's only a sophomore. So, we have a sophomore and a junior with us tonight. So, we expect both of these young men to be back here about the same time next year. So, we're very proud of them, as is wrestling coach, Mr. Crooks, and principal at West Caldwell High School, Jeff Link. So, let's give these two young men a big round of applause. It's always a great day for the Caldwell County school system when we can recognize students for reading. Not just reading, but reading 1 million words. Even better, when these students have read 1 million words during the first semester, meaning that these middle school students read 1 million words in 145 days, which equates to 6,897 words per day. So, this is a great accomplishment and is our honor to recognize these students. As I call your names, please come forward. We're going to start with Granite Falls Middle School. Principal there is Bill Schreiber. We have Rihanna Taylor, Sidney Probst, Katherine Edmondson, Ethan Velasquez, Zoe Shaw, Jada Fur, Ruel Hevner, Bailey Shows, Isaac Anderson, and Makina Haslip. So, we have these students from Granite Falls Middle. And I know the proud principal's already up front for a photograph. Dr. Stone, would you like for me to do one more school? Okay, this is a big group from Granite Falls Middle, and these students have read 1 million words, and they're still reading. So, a lot of them have read over a million words. All right, so let's give them a big round of applause.
Down on the ledge, Doc.
Now, we have students from Hudson Middle School. And Bill Griffin is here this evening. He's the principal. We have Allison Bradshaw, Austin Rongo, and Joshua Adams. So, we have three students from Hudson Middle. And we have a few students from William Lenore Middle School. So, from William Lenore Middle School, and Lisa Vaughn is principal. She's with us. We have Nicholas Thompson. And we have Stephen Lynn. Katie Zambrano and Mackenzie Lawrence. So, okay, we have another student. Good, very good. So, we have... So, these are our William Lenore Middle School students and our Hudson Middle School students who have read well over a million words. The South Caldwell High School Beta Club earned 10 awards with 25 Spartan Betas placing first, second, or third during competition at the 76th Annual North Carolina Senior Beta Convention. An accomplishment that amplifies an all-time record of excellence for South Caldwell. And we know we usually see them here this time of year, the Beta Club. So, it's our honor to congratulate the Betas who are here with us this evening from South Caldwell High School. And we also have two from Hybryton. But we'll start with South Caldwell High School. First place quiz bowl team. Andy Willis, David Marhal, Carrie Burgess, Rebecca Hall, and Griffin Haas. So, we have a first place quiz bowl. They are also excellent spellers because we have a first-place spelling champion from South Caldwell High School Beta Club, and that is Carrie Burgess. And here comes Jonathan Haas. Well, I told him too, with 74 degrees, we may be missing a few high school students this evening. Pardon?
You skipped two sections of the reading. Collettsville and Happy Valley. I don't know where they are, but they're here. Collettsville and Happy Valley, you don't have them.
So, we're not done with the readers yet.
Oh, okay, that's... Okay. Did we skip all this one? Okay. Thank you. We're trying to keep up with all these certificates. Thank you, Dr. Burns. Okay, well, let's get finished with the Beta.
You can't miss the readers.
I've got it. I've got the list. Thank you. Thank you. Well, we'll go back to the readers in a second, okay? So, with the Beta Club, second place social studies. We have with us David Marhal. He's not here this... Okay. Second place English, Rebecca Hall. Second place math, Jacob Drammon. Second place science, Griffin Haas. Okay. Third place creative writing, Levi Huffman. Third place U.S. history, Isaac Talbert. Third place biology, Ryan Stone. Second place character skit, written, directed by Rebecca Hall and Carrie Burgess. Other actors include Isaac Talbert, Rebecca Story, Jonathan Carter, Travis St. Bryce, John Kripner, Griffin Haas, Meredith Hudson, Ryan Stone, and China Trimmer. You can see how we get the certificate a little mixed up tonight.
And I know all of them.
Rebecca, another one for Rebecca. Carrie? Carrie's not here. Rebecca? Story? Travis? Griffin? You're welcome. There it is. And Brian? No, Brian's still here. He's got that great last name.
Okay. All right. Okay, third place finish in math in the Junior Beta Convention. And this is not the Senior Beta, but this is the Junior Beta. And this is also a student at South Caldwell High School, a freshman, Macy King. So, is Macy here with us tonight? Okay, we'll just give that to Jonathan. Okay? And we also have two Hybryton Beta Club winners who actually ranked in the top three in this competition. And that's second in chemistry, Adina Jan. And first in music fine arts, Tiffany De Guzman. So, do we have those students with us? Steven, you might see them? Okay. We'll move on. Okay, we're going to go back to our...
Readers.
Did I say how wonderful they were? How many words have they read?
Over a million.
Thank you. You're being so attentive. Over a million words. So, we're going to go back because we definitely don't want to leave these students out. This is a great accomplishment. So, it's Happy Valley and Collettsville. Those are our final two schools. Happy Valley, the principal there, as I mentioned earlier, is Chad Smith. And the students are Cheyenne McMahon, Wesley Yates, Catherine McCoy, and I know Catherine's here with us this evening, and Ashley Prestwood. And we will finish up with Collettsville to join this group. And the principal is Craig Styron. And we have Anya Blackwelder. Anya isn't here this evening. Brooke Hartley, Travis Inlow, and Aubrey Carter. So, we do have four from Collettsville.
Smile over a little bit so we can... This way.
Okay, I think we can now move to our final honors and rec for this evening. Okay? AFS National Attention. The Hybryton High School AFS program has been recognized by the AFS USA as a national top-performing AFS school in 2014. A distinction that was presented to the AFS advisor, Mr. John Spicer. This national honor was bestowed on the Hybryton AFS. And if you don't know what AFS stands for, that's for American Field Service. It's a foreign exchange program. And it was recognized for its involvement in actively promoting global citizenship through intercultural learning and for the program's ability to foster critical 21st century learning skills through intercultural communication. So, Mr. Spicer has been doing this for 22 years, and this program is very well-known throughout the district. He does have some students here tonight to accept this distinction from us as well, to recognize them for their national attention. And Lisa Mock is an AFS exchange student from Germany. So, is Lisa with... Yes, Lisa's with us this evening. And we have Mandy McMenamy. And Mandy is her host sister, or she is a host sister of an AFS student, Helena. But Helena is actually on a trip today. And that's part of the experience that they travel. We also have the Hybryton AFS officers. And we have William Kent. And Sierra Wilson. Sierra Wilson. We have Madison Setzer. Anna Rae Von Ozdahl. Is Anna Rae here? Okay. Matthew Lu. And then, of course, John Spicer, if you'll come forward because you lead this group and is just very well-known throughout the district and now throughout the nation for its accomplishments. So, we're very, very proud of you. Let's give them a big round of applause. Let's give them a big round of applause. We have one last recognition. And do you want me to?
Yes, sir.
We would like to recognize our new reporter. Her name is Lex Mintz. And Lex, we don't do this every board meeting, but if you'd like to stand up and just wave and. This is Lex. Lex is a 2013 graduate from Western Carolina University. And we're glad to welcome Lex to our education system here in Caldwell County. But we're also sad to see someone go. And I'll just leave that.
All right. Before you leave, we've had, over the last year, we've had our education reporter, someone who's done a tremendous job reporting on stories of the school system. And we're going to miss her. She is Megan Frisk, and she's moving in a week or so to work with the Department of Education in Georgia, which means we have trained her well. She knows everything about education, so she's going to import it to Georgia. But Megan, come on up, Megan. Megan has been a, a great reporter. And if you follow some of her stories in the news topic, you know she writes with a passion. She also understands and gets education and reports that way. So it's truly, we're going to miss Megan, and we wish her well in Georgia. And we've enjoyed the experience, Megan. But most of all, thank you very much for the fair reporting, the good reporting of our school system, and we do appreciate that. Now, it's not often that we hug the press, so it's a good sign. Or more importantly, the press likes us.
Yeah, I know.
All right, Megan, come take a picture with us. Go Wild Georgia.
Uh, let me just mention that Mr. Joe Sims is not here this evening. He had a business trip out of town. Uh, he regrets not being able to be here. But now is the time that if you need to go eat dinner, do homework, read, whatever, now would be the appropriate time. But thank you so much for being here. Drive carefully.
We're going to move on with the agenda. The next item on the agenda is public comment. And as of 4:30 this afternoon, we had not received any public comments. So we'll move on with the agenda. And next is our superintendent, Dr. Steve Stone.
Good evening, board members and members of the public. And thanks for everyone who came tonight for reading and for other options that we recognize. I do want to call to the board's attention that March and February were designated as important weeks in the school system. We had National School Social Workers Week, which is March last week, March 2nd through the 8th. And the counseling week was back in February. So I thought it would be fitting at this time that Jill Duffy could come forward and could introduce some folks who she would like to talk a little bit about what we do in those two fields and how we do have a phenomenal staff that works very hard to meet the needs of our students. So Ms. Duffy, if you'll come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, and Dr. Stone. Thank you so much for giving us an opportunity to showcase these two wonderful programs. It really is a privilege of mine to be able to work with the school counselors and social workers in, in impacting the outcomes of students' achievement and behaviors and career readiness. Our, our focus as a collective department is on the safety, health, and health of students. And we want them to be in school and ready to learn. So you'll hear a little bit about some of the functions of the social workers and counselors and how that they impact students in that way. School social workers, our school social workers and school counselors make up two of the three prongs of student support services. The school nurses comprise, comprise the third prong, and they usually are recognized in May. Thirty-six school counselors and fifteen school social workers serve our twenty-six schools. The exceptional children's department also employs a clinical social worker for the district. And the Department of Social Services provides two social workers for the committee, for the communities and schools partnership that we have. School social workers and school counselors assist in the assessment and referral of students to several of our key programs, among which are our day treatment partnerships, our alternative schools, our alternatives to suspension program, which really works with a number of our nonprofits in the community. They assist in case management and system of care for our students with highest need in the community. I believe Dr. Stone highlighted that service on profiles today of how case management helps to increase graduation rates and, and also to prevent dropout. Our, our folks work with our homeless students. They also provide academic assistance when families are in need. Mental health assessment, counseling, and referral. And, and they also provide a critical incident response at the district level whenever we have a need for grief and loss counseling. And those are not all inclusive, but that's a number of things that they do assist with. It is, it is really wonderful to have them with us. And some of the ways that we have helped and what we have seen over the last several years as we've worked as a comprehensive whole and doing more interdisciplinary team collaboration is that our graduation rate for the district over the last seven years has risen from seventy point seven percent to eighty-nine point four percent or eighteen point seven percent, almost nineteen percent in the last seven years. Our dropout rates have also steadily declined. We had a high number of three hundred and thirty-two students who dropped from school in two thousand six and seven. Last, the year before last, we were down to one hundred and fifty-nine. This past school year, our numbers at, in May, the ninth month, were ninety-five. So that was a huge decrease from the year before. However, those numbers aren't official until sometime later this month. Power School has, you know, stalled some things, but I'm, I'm thinking we're going to hear and have the official number about the third week of March. And I'm very excited about that because I think the number will be close, and we're going to show a huge drop from even the previous year, which was the lowest we had been, and we were below the state average at that time. We couldn't do that without our social workers and our counselors and also our nurses that you'll hear about later. But without further ado, I will introduce to you Gwen Laws, who is our lead social worker. And then she can introduce Laura, our school counselor lead.
Well, thank you, Jill. Now, I don't know what to talk about because you've already said everything I was going to say. It gives me pleasure to give you a little information about school social workers and what we do in the schools. We consider ourselves the link between the school, the community, and the agencies that we work with in our homes. I'm just going to give you some of our primary duties that we deal with every day. And I'm sure I'm not including all of them, and as Jill has said some of them. We assist with providing Christmas for our families in need. And we do all the referrals to the Toys for Tots that come through the school social work program. We did approximately a thousand referrals to school Christmas this year. We assist with financial needs such as rent, power, clothing, food, and water. Mental health referrals, follow-up, transportation to these appointments. We deal with immediate mental health issues in the schools such as cutting, suicidal tendencies, grief counseling, changes in family dynamics, substance abuse, gender, gender issues, bullying and social media, and domestic violence. And these are just some of the issues we deal with every day. And we work very closely, as Jill said, I want, as I talk about this, it's not just us, it, we're a team. We're the, it's the school counselor, school psychologist, school nurse. We work as a team, and we try to wrap all of our services around students and needs. We are in charge of the student attendance. We are the ones that takes the parents or the student to court. We file the petitions, and we are there to testify on the behalf of the school. We do appearance in court, as I stated. We refer and place students in the alternative suspension program. We actually are the ones now that go out and find the community resources to put those students in those different situations. We do home visits. We frequently initiate the first contact with a parent from the school. A lot of my, our parents don't have phones, as you know, and a lot of times we're going out to pass on the message for what the school wants us to, to give to the family. We provide transportation to school for appointments. We consult with the staff members, child abuse and neglect reports and follow-ups. And also, we work with DSS workers. We network with community partners and agencies. We have fundraising in, within the school for our student services, which is ran through the Ed Foundation. And you've probably heard of our Baskets for Hope. We've raised like $2,000 one year and $1,800, and we use this to help our families in need. We have input into the 504, the IEP plans, and we work with RTI. We have, we assist with the graduation project assistant with that. And as Jill was talked about, we have the at-risk teams at High Brighton at South, which is made of all student support services. High Brighton started theirs really last year. The year before that was 2011, 12. Their graduation rate was eighty-three point six. Last year, when they first used their graduation at-risk program, it's ninety-one point two. South has been doing it quite a bit longer, but before they started in 2009, 2010, theirs was eighty point five. And last year was ninety-five point two, a fifteen percent increase. And the, as I said, are some of the things we do. One last thing that I think's really important, that's really, we're seeing an increase, is the students there in McKinney-Bento. And for you that may not know what that is, it's a federal law that says that we will provide services to the homeless students. Last year, it was approximately one hundred and forty-six. We've already passed one hundred and fifty. And we fill out all the paperwork that has to be done on these students. We help assist with the transportation, provide their school supplies or any other needs they have. So these are just a few of the things that we do. I'm sure I've forgotten some, but I appreciate your support of us. And I just want, I, some of you've heard me say this, but it just to me rings in what we all do. There's once, was a teacher that said, "I cannot teach the brain when the heart's hurting." And I feel like what we do is heal the heart. Because you can't come to school if you're hungry and you're dealing with domestic violence and child abuse and learn. So we try to link those services they need to make things better for them. Thank you. And Laura Parnell, the school counselors, now we'll talk. Oh, I forgot. I have one social worker here, sorry. Tina McQuarrie is our brand new social worker, started two weeks ago. And she works at Wesley Nor and also at Valmied. And we're glad she could come. The other ones had prior commitments. So thank you again.
Thank you for inviting me to come and address you this evening. This is my first time addressing the board, so I, I will be much briefer than these two ladies. I am Laura Parnell. My full-time position is as a school counselor at Hudson Middle School. And then I also facilitate school counselor meetings and professional development. Professional school counselors use leadership, advocacy, and collaboration to ensure that all students graduate career and college ready. We deliver, deliver comprehensive programs that address academic, career, and personal social development for all students. So school counselors are, really, we try to reach all for prevention, and then also we reach some for intervention when they're in need. We consult and collaborate with all stakeholders. We work heavily with teachers, parents, our administrators. I spent most of my day today doing that, collaborating and consulting about academic progress for some of our students. Gone are the days of the guidance counselor who sat behind her desk or his desk and registered students for classes. We are an integral part of the school community. We are active participants, and we appreciate your support in sustaining and growing our programs. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all that you do, and we do know that it'd be nice if we had like double the number of you all, and it would be very helpful. But we do, we do know that you work quite a bit with our students who need that little extra push or that heart healing. And so we thank you very much for that. And we join in celebrating your week in the past, and actually, all both two weeks are in the past, so we, we're celebrating tonight, so thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to move on to item B, which is for Board Action, item B1. The North Carolina General Assembly force passed North Carolina General Statute 115C 38-1C, which was the Read to Achieve legislation. There's been a lot of information out there about that, a lot of angst on the parts of of school systems about how to implement that. That, of course, carries with it that every child needs to be able to read and be proficient by, in reading by the end of third grade. And if not, they must attend a summer academy or to make sure that they, before they are promoted to fourth. Well, there's been, that's been a moving target. And you can see by the chart you have in your packet that in August, we had certain guidelines. In January, we had additional guidelines, the current guidelines. And the proposal is what we're asking for you to approve tonight. We do have, by the State Board of Education's authority, to have a, an individual request from the local school district to use alternative assessments. And what you have are the three alternative assessments that we would like to utilize with the Read to Achieve. Demonstrated mastery at a level P on the reading 3D and TRC, which is text reading and comprehension by the end of third grade. That's seventy percent threshold for end-of-year reading benchmark. And the norm curve of fifty percent, fifty plus on instructional reading level, which is a three point five, which is a third grade, fifth month equivalent on the STAR reading. Carol and her staff have worked extensively on this. Vicky's back there for those really technical questions that you may have about this. She's been following the state legislation and the state board. We really do believe, though, that this will be a much more truer, accurate picture of our third graders' reading ability. So the, we would like to recommend approval of the alternative assessment proposals from Caldwell County schools.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the alternative assessment proposal under the General Assembly Read to Achieve Plan?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the proposed changes to the Read to Achieve Pathways to Reading Proficiency as outlined in our papers here.
Do I hear a second?
A second motion.
Anyone have any comments? Any questions? For Dr. Stone.
I'm so glad.
I can't even keep up with how fast it moves, but was there a question?
Not a question. I just appreciate the energy that's been put into it by Dr. Burns and.
And truly, Vicky back in the back.
Vicky, to put us at a stage where we need to be for the kind of growth that we want to see. You put your hearts into it for the benefit of the students, and we appreciate it. I appreciate it.
And it truly has been a moving target. I know Vicky went to a meeting what, last week, and almost every day she'd send back something that is, that's new and available for us to have access to. So we're going to grab this and send it on, once you approve it.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
The second item on the agenda for me tonight is the approval of administrative recommendations. And I would like to recommend David Johnson, who is with us, for the position of Finance Director. The date to be determined. Mr. Johnson is, has a Master of Business Administration and a Bachelor of Science as well. And he has served for six years as the Finance Officer for Wilkes County Schools. And prior to that, has had his experience in Wilkes County. And prior to that, was in the private business field. So David brings a lot of talent in our vetting to make sure he's the appropriate person for the job. He had some wonderful references, has a great relationship, and certainly a great record in Wilkes County. And certainly, we're going to gain from that experience here in Caldwell County. He's following in some big shoes for Carla, but has a phenomenal reputation and certainly will be able to do it. So I'd like to recommend David Johnson for the position of Finance Officer with Caldwell, Finance Director with Caldwell County Schools.
Do I hear a motion that we approve David Johnson as Finance Director, Caldwell County Schools?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion we approve David Clifton Johnson as new Finance Director of Caldwell County Schools.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Johnson.
David, come on up and introduce yourself and welcome to Caldwell County Schools.
Great. Chairman Parnell, board members, Dr. Stone, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for the consideration. I look forward to working with each of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Okay, next item on the agenda tonight is our Associate Superintendent for Human Resource Services, Dr. Trish Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Stone, I have several items for your attention. One for information and one, two requiring action this evening. I draw your attention to Exhibit 4. Exhibit 4 includes usual and customary personnel items that are for information-only, requiring no board action. Exhibit 5 includes usual and customary personnel items that require action. I respectfully recommend approval of the items as they have been presented to you.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the usual and customary personnel items.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Then Exhibit 6 includes our requests for student transfers. Since your last board meeting, we had 22 requests. Of the 22 that were submitted, all 22 meet established criteria. We respectfully recommend approval of the 22 student transfer requests as they have been presented. If approved, that brings our total student transfer requests for the 2013-14 year to two, excuse me, 606. I respectfully recommend approval of the transfers.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion that we approve the 2013-2014 student transfers as presented tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 2013-2014 student transfers for the month of March presented to us this evening. Second.
Okay. Any comments? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Next, we have our Associate Superintendent for Education Program Services, Dr. Carol Burns.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Stone, we have the new technology plan. In spite of what it says on the executive summary, it's not 12 to 14. We're still, we're still back in that. It's 14 to 16. We really feel like we almost need to do the technology plan on a yearly basis because it's changing so fast that we can hardly keep up with the changes that, that are being made and that need to be made. But I want to highlight a few things for you. We must have a plan in place in order for us to apply for E-Rate. David knows all about that. We need to apply for that in order to get as much money as we possibly can. The technology plan is done by a committee, and we have to have four parts to it. One is to set our goals for telecommunication and information technology. We have to have a professional development plan. And that's one thing that we were, that I've asked Craig to do, is to pull the professional development into a section by itself. And I will explain that to you because we need to be able to see that. We have to have an assessment program and policies. We did a pretty good job this year with our policies because we were doing the handbook again. So there are only about four policies that we'll need to work on this year. So we've done a very, very good job with that. I'm going to highlight just a little bit in the four sections and tell you a little bit about where we are. We've been working on shared services model. And you all know from the last year as we discussed this, as we did our strategic plan and so forth, that we're trying to deal with NC Cloud. We've had some good and bad times with that, and you've heard it all year long as we've tried to work with the new technology coming out of Raleigh and how we do our reports. And we have good days and bad days with it. And if you've read all of the things going, to make that happen, part of it is we've tried to do all of that in one year instead of two years. So I'm not going, going to criticize them. I'm just going to say they tried, and we've tried. But we're certainly working on a shared services model. We certainly cannot do this by ourselves. We've tried to work on universal access to personal teaching and learning devices. And to tell you a little bit about that, we have 11,000 user devices in the school system now. With 12,000 students, you see sort of where we are. But that is about 8,000 PCs and laptops. So they're not where we all would like for them to be. We have new this year, 2,044 Chromebooks. And I can tell you, that's the newest thing that we're going to. We have a thousand, just over a thousand iPads, and 200 of those are new. And the one thing that we worked on this year more than anything else was trying to make sure we had a good listing of everything we had, and we worked on bandwidth. That's what we needed more than anything else. So we are working on personal teaching and learning devices. We've had to be very careful with that because we do have some school systems who want, schools who want to go ahead. And the PTA, PTO would want to buy this and that. And we have to work with that very carefully because we do not want to produce the digital divide. And when I say that, you understand what I'm saying, is somebody drive, buys 50 here. Everything has to fit. And even though they're, they want to run ahead, and we're trying not to hold anybody back. We have to keep people on a pretty level playing field while we do this. So that's an area we work with constantly. All children need equal access to technology. We've worked on state, statewide access to digital teaching and learning resources. We've worked on open education resources. And the best I can tell you that, this is an area we have to, we struggle with a little bit. There are so many, many, many things out there for teachers. And we keep, one of the things we need to do is to learn to evaluate that and help them evaluate that. Somebody could be doing that every day, all day long. Because there is much, much good out there, but there is also much, much junk out there. So that's the area that we struggle with. Everybody talks about, oh, this is free and this is wonderful and all of that. But when you really get to it, you have to see if it matches the curriculum, if it's really good or not. We've worked on statewide model of technology-enabled professional development. And that's how to, how to work with the teachers. And it's not only in using the technology, but how to embed that in your teaching. So that when we start to use a piece of equipment or something special, it's just not a novelty to them or to the students. It really fits within that. We've worked on citizen 21st century leadership for all, all of our schools. And in other words, we have to figure out what it is the best we can that our students need to be ready when they leave school to be successful. And that's hard. Funding will continue to be difficult, and we'll depend on David to find us lots and lots of money along the way. We're very fearful that when race to the top money is gone, that we're going to be, and I've talked to Dottie about that and cried on her shoulder. Every time we had $1,000 here or there in that line item, we kept moving it over and moving it over so we could get some pieces of technology. And so after this year, we won't be moving it over, so we won't have any money to move over at that point. So we will ask that you remember us when, the whole school system and technology, when you're working on the budget. We do have a section within the, the plan that, one of the most important parts is the professional development. Policies, as I indicated, are all developed. We have four that we still need to do that we will end up doing this year. And we are also going to pull out the professional development and let it stand in a section by itself. With all of that said, unless you have questions, we recommend that you approve the technology, the two-year technology plan, knowing that it will quickly need to be revised.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the 2014-2016 technology plan as, has been presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 2014-16 technology plan as presented, knowing that it will have to be revised from time to time fairly often.
Second. Any comments? Any questions? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Burns. Thank you for all you do. Next on our agenda is Assistant Superintendent for Auxiliary Services, Dr. Jeff Church.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Stone, I have four items for your action tonight. Exhibit 8, our bids for boiler replacement at Granite Falls Elementary School. James M. Pleasance was the low bidder. I respectfully request acceptance of these bids.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the bids for the boiler replacement at Granite Falls Elementary School?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion we approve the bid from James M. Pleasance for the Granite Falls Elementary School boiler replacement.
Does there a second?
A second motion.
Any comments? Any questions? I'm sure we've done business with...
We have. Numerous times.
And theirs is considerably lower than the nation's one.
It is.
Very good. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Exhibit 9 is an ADM application to pay for the boiler at Granite Falls Elementary School. I respectfully request that you approve the ADM application as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the ADM application for the boiler replacement at Granite Falls Elementary.
Second.
All right. Any comments? Any questions? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Exhibit 10 is a proposal from Broling &amp; Robertson for special inspections for the new middle school. We interviewed numerous firms, and we recommend Broling &amp; Robertson. One piece that is important as we try to keep local businesses involved, this, they are out of Charlotte. However, the special inspector lives in Lenore. So it's important to put Caldwell County a person employed. So I respectfully request that you accept Broling &amp; Robertson to conduct our special inspections with the new middle school project.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we approve Broling &amp; Robertson as special inspections, individuals in this special inspections proposal? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Broling &amp; Robertson Incorporated for special inspections with our middle school project. Second.
Any comments? Any questions? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Church. And things are moving along. Thank you for the, the update you gave us today.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Trish Johnson again. She is acting as interim Finance Director. So we want to call her back to do a couple of budget amendments.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Stone, this is going to be interesting. Close your ears, David. I have three budget amendments for your attention this evening in Exhibit 11. The first budget amendment is to the state public school fund in the amount of $3,042 for the purpose of technology interest earned in December, panic alarms, and transfers to textbook fund totaling $3,042. That brings that total item, budget item to 71,000, 71,965,852. Budget amendment 15 is to the current expense account. That's an amendment to increase the appropriation funding for the CTE Huskins program at Caldwell Community College. That's in a total of $46,793. That brings that total line item budget amount to $21,502, no, $21,521,502,382. Then budget amendment 16 is to the federal grant fund. That's for the purpose, that's amendment, for the purpose of increasing Title I, the PRC 50, to the amount of $193,055. That's due to program director amendments to the original budget. That total amount, if approved, brings that budget line item now to $7,852,690. I respectfully recommend approval of these budget items as they have been presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the budget amendments as written in our packet.
Thank you. Not as I presented them to you. That is good. That is good.
Okay, so we have a second as well...
You probably just don't even know what you have. But you have your packet.
Any questions? Any comments? Surely we've got some questions.
How glad are you that Mr. Johnson...
Oh, if I, if I could turn a cartwheel, I would. I would. I tried to encourage him to come and do this tonight.
You can notice the smiles over here.
He thought everybody needed some humor.
Anything else? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
You can tell Trish is not used to handling millions of dollars. She prefers the thousands.
Okay, the next item is board information, possible action. We have no possible action. Let me just mention that in two weeks, we're going to have our community board meeting. And to the board, thank you for the items that you've already submitted. And if you have anything else, if you can get that to us here in short order, we can include that as part of our community work session. That's going to be at South Caldwell. So just for board information, if you'll do that here, probably within the next week, so we can get that prepared. Dr. Stone, do you have it?
Very quickly, just two items. One, we have missed, we have additional four student make-up days because of the weather. We have one scheduled for March 28th, which will leave us with three. This will be a topic that we discuss in the, in the retreat or the work session. Come prepared. We're going to share some options with you about how to handle those three student days and the three staff days. So we hope that the weather's over with, certainly by March the 24th. But we would like to, to share some items with you and to have you make those final approvals in the, in the work session. So traditionally, we don't have action in the work session, but I would like, since we need to establish that for parents, for that to be the one item that we do have some action for. The second thing I'll mention today is I had the pleasure of going to the county office at 2:30 and watching Stan Kaiser sign his name on that loan for $14.5 million. So it is official, no turning back. The county has signed on to it. So it was a good day for Caldwell County Schools and for the new William Lenore Middle School project.
Wonderful.
I think we're all very happy about that.
Yes.
Move us forward with that, and progress is... Move is forward with that, and progress is moving along quickly here, and certainly we hope and pray for good weather so that they can get their work done, and look forward to that being open in August 2015. Next on the agenda is announcements, and as I indicated, two weeks from today, at South Caldwell High School, 3 o'clock, we will be doing our work session. That is on March 24th, and that will be followed by our community board meeting at South Caldwell in the theater there at 6 o'clock. Our next regular board meeting will be here at the Education Center on April the 14th. So those are the items that we will be looking to in the next month or so here. Does anybody have anything else they want to add to that? If not, do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed. Everyone have a great afternoon, drive carefully, and the sun is probably still shining outside.